I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the United States of America.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come up for you today grateful for all the blessings you have provided each of us. We pray for your guidance and wisdom as we work on issues meaningful to the health, safety, and prosperity of others. We ask that you bless our elected officials and that your presence is with them in their duties. We are thankful for the opportunity to serve others. I pray you help guide us as we work on local issues and make decisions without bias or judgment. We pray for our public service men and women and ask you bless them with courage and health as they continually give of themselves. We ask for guidance and healing to all those that are suffering and that you bring their peace. We pray for resolution of conflicts and efforts to help one another. We pray for our nation, the world, and our local community and each other. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. We do have quite a bit of public comment that came in through email and public comment form. So I'll read those first and then we'll ask for anyone in the audience that'd like to make public comments to come up and speak. The first one is from Lynn Nymeier. During the late nineteen eighties, while the owner of Nymeier Studio, I served on a committee under the leadership of then Mayor Walter Gerald's to apply for and receive federal funding for the maintenance and preservation of historic downtown sites and buildings. This was under a federal program to preserve much mainstream areas. I believe that Eddie County Courthouse was included. If so, then the courthouse would be protected in perpetuity by federal law as historic landmark. I urge the county to not take drastic action to destroy this landmark without a complete background search and a vote by citizenship of Eddie County of yes or no. The next one is from Sandy Collier. Historic preservation is an important way for us to transmit our understanding of the past to future generations. Carlsbad's history has many facets and historic preservation helps tell these stories. Born and raised in Carlsbad, New Mexico, with fond memories of the courthouse, it was not just a building, but a cornerstone of activities central to all in Carlsbad. The building is beautiful, architecture of the ground lovely and worth restoring. Please consider it. Next, we have Davis Ruhark. Davis Ruhark to the Honorable County Commissioners of Eddie County, New Mexico. It is my in my legal career spanning almost forty years now and after trying many murder and other serious cases in many different courthouses in three states, I implore you as a legislative body for Eddie County to make provisions for the renovation of the Carlsbad courthouse. I have always found that the older courtrooms, even after revocation, demand respect and solemnity from the lawyers, participants, as well as general public. Court proceedings and that level need to impress upon all just how serious our criminal and civil justice systems should be viewed. These cases just can't be heard in a twelve-by-twelve square room with a cheap bench and furniture in the room. The newer courtrooms of many occasions contribute to the view that our justice system just isn't serious. I believe any courthouse built at the southern edge of Carlsbad simply would not demand the same reverence as the magnificent courthouse in the center of town, one that has quite a compelling history at that. Trying cases in Carlsbad has has always been a joy. I believe that the courthouse facilities contributed to that joy I experienced. The reverence I felt and the knowledge that justice would be served. If you have any questions for me, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely yours. Next, we have Linda Bickerstaff. This is written in regard to the proposed relocation of the Eddie County courthouse to the South Side Industrial Complex. I, like many others in Carlsbad, would like to express my concern and utmost disagreement over the idea of moving the workings of the courthouse and leaving the beautiful courthouse of our great city to the misguided workings of an independent party who cares nothing about this historic building. The building not only serves as a important public building centrally located in the community, but it also but it is also a public gathering place for many family events that take place throughout the year. The grounds of the courthouse are so well manicured year-round, can you guarantee that the building and the grounds will not lose its beautiful presence? In addition, those of us who have grown up here and lived here all of our lives have watched countless other historic and beautiful buildings be destroyed, which leaves the city with a void to the past for many of us. Is that the fate of Eddie County courthouse because an investor does not see the beauty and meaning of this public space? I believe in progress and am happy to see forward movement in Carlsbad and Eddie County, but there are certain things that need to remain as-is, especially the beautiful iconic courthouse. I implore you, the Eddie County Commissioners, to reconsider and rescind the decision to move the Eddie County courthouse as proposed and come up with a solution that better suits our city and the citizens of Carlsbad, which is to leave the courthouse in its present location. Next is from Ren Pratherstroud. I feel strongly that the historic Eddie County courthouse should remain the visual and working center of Eddie County. A new location for the detention center would improve the downtown area, but building a new courthouse is not necessary or desirable. Anyone who has lived in Carlsbad even briefly is proud of the majestic building at the center of our downtown that still functions as our unique courthouse. Please preserve it as a working courthouse for future citizens of the county. Next is from Judy Parker. I was raised in Carlsbad, went to Edison, Airfield, Alta Vista, and graduated where Pierre-Lévy is. My family came to Eddie County in nineteen oh five. Most are still here. Please restore our beautiful courthouse and don't destroy it. It's a landmark. We have been in all forty-eight lower states and no one except Texas has such a historic courthouse. Judy Walker Parker. Next is from Barbara June Nguyen. Please vote no on the relocation of our courthouse. Next is from Gwen Gadbury. Good morning. I am writing in regards to the meeting taking place on four fifteen twenty twenty-four. I believe our current courthouse is unique and is very fitting for New Mexico. I believe the location for the courthouse is right where it needs to be in the center of town, where events take place and where it needs to be for Artesia residents as well. Out by the airport seems very absurd for a courthouse location and also farther for people who are needing to come down from Artesia to get to the courthouse. This building represents Eddie County in my opinion, and with the oil-filled traffic out by the airport seems highly dangerous for a day-to-day basis. I believe the location is in fact suitable for a new jail, especially on the outskirts of town, but the courthouse should remain in the center of town. I appreciate your time regarding this matter. The next one is from Marjorie Purcell. As a resident of Carlsbad and property owner since nineteen forty-nine, I was appalled when reading that the Eddie County courthouse is in danger of being replaced. This building is an extremely important part of Carlsbad history and identity. The town's character has changed over the years. The courthouse, however, has remained the one constant reminder of the charm and history of Eddie County. Next is from Kelly Wicksum. Courthouse, myself, and my voting tax-paying household all strongly oppose the idea of building a new courthouse. We have lived here most of our lives. We believe our tax dollars could be better spent on infrastructure. This has the sound and smell of something for benefit of someone's personal bank account. We will vote no on this given the opportunity and will vote against anyone who supports this. Kelly Wicksum. Next is from Suzette Johnson. Please vote no on the proposed judicial complex in South Carlsbad. Our courthouse is a treasured landmark. If the courts must be moved, they should not be moved to the industrial complex in South Carlsbad. Next is from Floyd and Christine Haston. To the Board of Eddie County Commissioners, please renovate our historical courthouse that shares the history of downtown Carlsbad. Our town is booming with new people that will also learn to love this historical site. Our courthouse is Carlsbad, which along with its citizens has shared our sorrows and joys. As a town moves to the future, please don't erase the past that brought us here. This site is repairable and will speak as our history as well as the future when we are long gone. Thank you, Floyd and Christine Haston. Next is from Larry Mitchell. I ask that you would be in favor of keeping the county courthouse activities in the downtown where it is in the middle of our governmental area in town. While the detention center would work best outside of town next to the sheriff's office, the courthouse would serve would better serve Carlsbad and Artesian by being central to the community, not to mention it would be close to city government as well. I would propose a solution to keep the courthouse as is and add-on to the county annex. Please vote no to fund a new courthouse. Also from Larry Mitchell, to our county commissioners, please vote in support of keeping the courthouse and its services in its present locations. Yes, it is understood the structure will not be demolished, but the courthouse and its operations are central to the city of Carlsbad and a vital part of the downtown economy. Many retailers, service businesses, and restaurants downtown rely on traffic from Eddie County employees and visitors. Relocating the very function of the courthouse will move at least a hundred employees outside of the city proper, not to mention it would be a longer drive for citizens in northern Eddie County. It is indeed a great concept to construct a new detention center near the sheriff's office, but please vote in favor of keeping the courthouse where it is located and for its rehabilitation. It has been ignored far too long. Respectfully, Larry Mitchell. Next is Donald Smith. I am sending this message to encourage all the county commissioners to vote against tearing down our county courthouse. A yes vote to tear down the historic courthouse will mean a no vote against my county commissioner next election. That's a promise. Next is from Larry Mullins. I cannot believe you people are even contemplating getting rid of the county courthouse. It is a symbol of Carlsbad and should be preserved. I also heard that the high school may be torn down. What is happening to this town? Next is from Alan Gwynn. Dear Eddie County Commissioners, please vote no on the proposed judicial complex. Please pursue the route to preserve and renovate our current courthouse. Chabas County was able to do it. To abandon our courthouse is an affront to citizens of Eddie County. Several downtown buildings are available and can be renovated to expand it. Thank you, Alan Gwynn. Next is Martine Marie Helton. Commissioners, please don't make any of the proposed changes to the courthouse. I have not lived in Carlsbad for a long time, but I still care deeply about it. I grew up there and graduated from NMSUC. The courthouse gives a sense of tradition, character, and dignity. A strip mall courthouse would be so generically bland and would not express the pride that citizens of Carlsbad have in their town. Please reconsider. Thank you for your time. Next, we have Faith Johnson. Dear county commissioners, I am very distraught and saddened by the proposal to move all county offices, including the courthouse, to the South Side Industrial Complex. This is, in my estimation, a disservice to Carlsbad. Our courthouse is iconic, a beautiful historic building that is the very center of Carlsbad. Think Farmer's Market on the roof of Christmas and the very idea of selling it for bed and breakfast or niche hotel. You know that will not happen and to abandon it will only cause it to fall in disrepair. The manicured lawns will not be taken care of and the beautiful buildings will no longer be in place for the community pride. Why not use the money to do improvements? I implore you to rethink this idea. We have already lost too many iconic buildings in Seabard and to sacrifice the courthouse would be a regrettable decision. Thank you sincerely, Faith Johnson. Next is Elaine Mead. Dear commissioners, I urge you to contact the New Mexico Historical Preservation District regarding the restoration of Eddie County courthouse so that it can remain in place and continue to function as it has for generations as the soul of downtown. Our local Main Street organizations should be able to facilitate this conversation. Respectfully, Elaine Mead Murphy. Also from Elaine Mead Murphy. Dear commissioners, we citizens of Carlsbad wish to maintain the courthouse at the historic downtown plaza for its original purpose. We would love a tour of the interior to see the history, architect, and heritage of this building. Please arrange for a public tour. Please bring the Pioneer Plaza to the attention of the public so that they can see the hundreds of names of families who settled here generations ago. Please preserve this building for its original purpose as directed by its historic designation. Respectfully, Elaine Mead Murphy. And also, just before we move into people that are here, we did receive several questions for the town hall meetings, but I just wanted to remind everybody that those questions were answered within the presentation in the town hall meeting, so they won't be read out loud or answered here in this meeting. If those people would like to make those comments, they can either send in a comment or they can come and speak here in person. So I'll go ahead and open it up to the people that are here for public comment.
Good morning, commissioners. Mark Corten, I'm an attorney here in Carlsbad. I was amazed to hear that every single comment that was read, every one of them opposes moving the courthouse. Commissioners, I hope you'll really listen to the public on this one. This is not a case of a few noisy squeaky wheels. This is the entire public urging you not to move the courthouse. There's practical reasons, there's sentimental reasons, but all of them are valid. One thing that struck me is you've got comments from people who work in the courthouse. Davis Ruhark is a prosecutor that I was across from in several trials, and he's right. The courthouse needs to have solemnity. It needs to have a solemn atmosphere, a professional atmosphere. It need not look like a new high-rise office. It needs to look like a courthouse. There are people who never go in the courthouse who urged you not to move it because it is the center of town. They only see it from the outside, but it means something. It means something to know that the heartbeat of this city, of its legal community, is there. I can tell you that every attorney in this town is located within a mile of that courthouse. Many of us are located within blocks. One is located across the street. Counselors, commissioners, there's no good reason that I've heard to move the courthouse down to the industrial park. It doesn't make any sense. I think what the commissioners are hoping to do is to use land that's available at a cheap price that can build from the ground up and thus save a lot of money, but that's I'm not sure they're saving anything because to build a courthouse like the one that you already have, you could probably renovate for less than it would ever cost you to build something of that quality again. You can't do it. And it's at the far end of town. Leave it at the center of this city where it belongs. It's at the center of the county, it's at the center of the city. I don't have any more to say, but I urge you to vote no on moving the courthouse. Put that put that plan behind you and look at renovating when you have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Norbert Rampel, U.S. Citizen and Resident of Eddie County. Our governor last month called our legislature into special session for July to supposedly take up additional safety protections that New Mexicans demand. But passwords and actions by her and most of our legislators amply demonstrate the absence of any concern for the safety of children in the womb. Our state specifically excludes them from the protection of public safety measures in violation of their human and civil rights, and it even welcomes their annihilation. When federal and state governments fail in their primary task to protect all citizens, no matter how young, small, or weak, local governments must step in and up. Our neighbors, Eunice, Hobbs, Clovis, and Lee and Roosevelt Counties have done so and made murder in the womb practically impossible within their jurisdictions. We can and must do likewise if we and our pious invocations and public proclamations are to mean anything and be credible. Since the U.S. Supreme Court two years ago found in our constitution no right to murder preborn children, we have no excuse left to avoid doing what is right and necessary to protect their lives. This commission should act with dispatch in following our neighbor's example. Their binding ordinances are public records available to our commissioners and their legal counsel. Apropos records. Minutes of past meetings of this body display a wide variety of detail on public comments offered, from almost none to a lot. Fairness and accuracy demand the avoidance of even the appearance of favor or disfavor. Public record should be concise, but even-handed in reflecting key points and rationales presented orally as well as submitted in writing. Final point. Inertia, indifference, apathy, and lethargy are poor guides to protecting public or private safety. What parents would delay life-saving surgery for their child inside or outside the womb? Don't delay. Act now.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into the trailing agenda. First item is commission meeting minutes for April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there anything that we need to look at for further discussion? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Next, we have expense approval report for April twenty twenty-four.
Anything for further discussion? Look for a motion to approve the expense approval report for April twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Next, we have purchase card approval report for March twenty twenty-four.
Any questions, comments?
No.
Look for a motion to approve purchase card approval report for March of twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into consideration of new courthouse. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, as you know, this was first brought to commission on the April sixteenth meeting for your consideration as a complex as a whole, considering a new detention center, a new administration building, and a new courthouse. Due to some public comments that we had, we decided to table this and have two town hall meetings, one in Carlsbad and one in Artesia. We did have those meetings. We also received some more public comment. So this is now being brought back to you, being separated out into three separate buildings, although it's still being presented as one complex. So this is the first one being considered for the new courthouse. Again, just remember, the courthouse alone would roughly cost about a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. That would include all courts, municipal, magistrate, and district. If it's just district court, it would be about a hundred and five million dollars. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chairman.
Okay, as we go into this, I'd like to hear from each of the commissioners. So we'll just go one by one, kind of their thoughts on this before.
Okay.
Commissioner Beer, you want to start us off?
I'd like to start with, I agree with about two-thirds of them. One of those comments you made. I'd like to give you a little history. I'm a fourth-generation rancher around here. I was wandering around that courthouse back when my mother was a court clerk for Dick Floyd and Bud Linaway. I've been all over that courthouse. I had unfettered access to that courthouse. I loved that courthouse. I don't know who started the rumor that we would even consider tearing that magnificent building down. I mean, that's just that's so far out of line, I don't even know where to start. The historic value of that, I think we need to really reconstruct that building and preserve the historic value of it. I've heard comments about all the empty rooms. I would love to fill those empty rooms with some city organizations. There's a lot of people and there's showed a lot of interest around city hall of doing something. But how do you get in there? I mean, there's some say you have access to it, some don't. I don't know how you you put anything in there. Let me give you something to think about. There's two buildings downtown that you can't just walk through the front door and wander around. You walk into four banks in the neighborhood. You can all of the other businesses, City Hall, the library, any of them, you just walk through the door and have a look around. You can't walk into that jail or that courthouse unfettered, particularly through the front door. Now, think about that. Is that really what we want in our hometown square and that historical building? This is the twenty-first century. I understand the necessary security for the court. I really do. It's got to be there. It didn't used to be there. In the beginning, that building had all kinds of activity in it. It had one courtroom. I've got a picture downstairs of my granddad lined up with the sheriff's posse with fifty-seven guys in front of it, a panoramic in front of that courthouse. That was back in the fifties. That is the center of this town. And it needs to be preserved, but I don't know how you give that wonderful old building back to the public who owns it with the court in it. I mean, you can't have the security that's necessary and have public access to that building. It's not compatible. In twenty-first century, you just can't do it. Another point of contention with me is we have the Farmer's Market, a lot of activities on that front lawn. They come out. They do their thing. First thing they do is they all enter a bunch of outhouses because they're not allowed in the front door to go to the bathroom. Is that really what we want? Think about that. And now pass it on to some of the others.
Commissioner Beer?
I have a couple of quick questions. You know, I've thought quite a bit about this. I've heard the public comments. There's a lot that I completely understand and I respect the public comments. I appreciate them. I do find it, I kind of like what Commissioner Beer said, the one thing that disappoints me the most is when folks continue to say we're going to tear it down. That's never been a discussion. That would never be a discussion. That's never been on the table. I'm disappointed in those who didn't help stop those discussions. Those discussions just upset people. And in a society where I feel like we spend more time trying to upset each other to get our way instead of basing things on facts, I just find that unfortunate, I guess. So as far as the other comments, I agree. I think there's a lot of, I really appreciated the one. There's two comments that have really resonated with me. One just happened. They would like a tour of the inside so they can see it. I think that's something we've heard quite often, is so many folks don't have as much access. I would like clarification on what is the access into the courthouse. How does that work? The other one that I really thought a lot about that I think has really stuck in my head for a little over, I guess, close to a week now, was the young lady in Artesia that spoke about she was a third-generation Carlsbad, and that was the first time she'd ever been in the courthouse was for that public hearing. It was the first time she had been able to see it. Now they're on to their fourth generation with the Carlsbad kids, their children. Obviously, have never been in it. I mean, they're young, so you wouldn't expect it necessarily, but at what point, if generations are continued to not be inside that courthouse, do we lose that next generation of wanting to make sure this amazing building is taken care of because they have nothing tied to it? So what I would like to understand is how do we make it? And maybe there are programs and I just don't know, but I would love to see access to the court so that kids can go in there, so that so many Carlsbad folks who love it can go in there and just understand that a little bit more. Before I'm comfortable moving forward with this, honestly, I there are more things that I think I would like to understand and see. I would like, I think, calling for an economic impact. I think that was a good idea. I think there's a lot of merit to that. The one thing that I heard a couple The one thing that I heard a couple of times through your presentation was about the beam that goes through the middle of the courthouse. I actually did have some contractors that stopped me that said, oh my goodness, if y'all have a big concrete beam, you might have more problems than you, than you know, you better look into that. I'm not a contractor, I'm sure many of you aren't contractors. A lot of us pretend we have a lot of knowledge towards that. But I think we need to, I would like to understand, what does that mean? What does that, how does that impact the building, the structure? If we do renovate the inside, how does that, what could possibly take place there? The water table we heard a lot about, again, I would like to understand more of that, to understand how does that impact the building? What are, what are the possibilities of, of if we renovate, if we add to it, how, what is that, how does that play into it? The other thing I heard a lot about, that I, I still don't, I would like to understand more, is the access to justice, we've heard that quite a few times. I want to make sure I understand that before we move forward on this, what does that exactly mean? Because the first time we heard that, it was access to justice to Artesians. You know, I have driven this route a few times to get to the courthouse from that turn, where you turn to where you would go to the loop, to the courthouse. Is plus or minus ten to thirteen minutes is usually taking me, I've timed it quite a few times now. From the loop turnoff to the possible site is roughly around fifteen minutes or so. So the timeframe is a plus or minute, plus or minus five minutes, either way. So I want to understand, what is access to justice, how would that be hampering access to justice? I think that's something I, I would like to understand before I'm comfortable moving the courthouse and making sure that there is proper access. Because the second time we heard that, it had nothing to do with Artesia, it was more about folks that walked to the courthouse here in Carlsbad. So I just want to make sure I'm fully aware of that and understanding of that. Because I do, I, I think, I think Carlsbad is proud of their courthouse, they should be. It is an amazing structure, it's an amazing building. I want to make sure that if it stays there, if we renovate it, I want to see how is it going to be able for the public to see it, to see the beauty of it. Because I think it's important, I think it's important that we continue to understand our history, everything that everybody has talked about. How do we make sure folks have access to that history, to a door that has all the brands on it? To all these amazing things that are in that building that we hear talk about. Do people get to see it? And how do we allow people to see it? Those are the things, before, before I would move forward, I would really like some, some more explanations and, and understanding the full renovation, what does that look like? Because if we're going to fully renovate it, how does that affect the courtrooms? How does that affect the beauty of what the courtrooms are? I want to make sure we're all fully aware of what we're asking for. Let's stay, let's stay right there, that's great, what does that look like for the courtrooms that exist right now? Because as we've heard from many of the judges, those courtrooms are beautiful, I agree, the courtroom I sat in was beautiful. When I toured that building, which I have toured that building, you know, I would like folks to be able to see the things I saw and, and have access to that. So those are some of the quick thoughts I have, those are the things that I would be looking for. I would like to understand what a full renovation would look like, how that would impact the current inside. Outside obviously is not impacted because you really can't, you're going to just make it whole again. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be renovated and fixed. But on the inside, I want to understand, what, what does a full renovation look like? To make sure that we keep the historic integrity of the building.
Commissioner Carlson?
Okay. My Fred, I'm a long time, born and raised here in Carlsbad. I'm older than probably everybody else on this commission. And I was, I was born and raised in Carlsbad in nineteen fifty. And I remember whenever the cottonwoods covered both sides of the street of Canal Street, I remember when it was two lane. I remember when there was a irrigation ditch that run down the, the east side of Canal Street all the way through town. And I have been in and out of that courthouse a lot of times, even since they have now have the security. And like everybody else, I think it's a beautiful old courthouse. And I would think that, I think that it's cheaper to do renovations that it might need than, than it would be to build a new courthouse. And I think that my personal feeling is, I'm all for doing the renovation, never once have I been asked, when I entered or left that courthouse, what my business was in that courthouse, it was just to go through a metal scanner. And so, and I had to remember to take my pocket knife out and my, and leave my cellphone in my car. That was the only restrictions that I've ever encountered in going through, entering or leaving that courthouse. So I don't have a lot of problems with access by the public. Now I think that one of the things that you brought up is the possibility, maybe we do need to, to examine having some organization or something that on a certain date or something does have a tour that citizens and tourists alike could go through and visit and be told about all the historical things that happened in that courthouse. I really enjoyed the fact that the Historical Society come to our town hall meeting and gave us some insight as to some of the prior things that might have happened in the history of that courthouse, and I think that's very important. So the way I feel about it, I would rather spend the money to renovate. And, and I understand Commissioner Henry's reservations on some of the things and, and very good points that we need to look at. One of the very first things that we need to look at is the economic impact that, that we've talked about. And so I think that that's one of the places that, that we should start. I do don't think we should move forward until we have all those points answered, and I think they're very good.
Commissioner Cordova?
I just want to start by thanking everybody that took the time to come to the town hall or reach out to all of us individually, via phone, email. Especially to the individuals that work at the courthouse. I was enlightened on some of the workings and dealings and, again, took a second tour to look at the space. I'm born and raised in Carlsbad too, and I have not spent a lot of time in the courthouse, thank goodness. But I did have jury duty there once before and, and you know, I thought it was a fantastic building. Some of the points that really resonated with me from the town hall was the access to justice. Never once did I think about how difficult it might be for individuals to get there for such an important, you know, date or court date. The attorneys that work so closely in the area, that was just an angle that I had not considered before. And so I'm grateful for those comments. Judge Binger, your recommendation of an economic impact analysis, definitely, I think that it one hundred percent needs to be done, and I believe that we're all in agreement, you know, of that. Also, you know, I want to point out that I do feel it's unfortunate that the employees weren't consulted as they felt they should be. Moving forward, I think that that's very important, I think that that's the highest priority moving forward with any decision that we make. And I'm not prepared to move forward with a final decision on this courthouse today. There were also, I tried very hard to take detailed notes of the comments and the individuals that were bringing that. And other things that stood out to me is we are the stewards of the public's money, and this is not our money, per se. And so we want to make sure that this is a decision that is respectful and reasonable to all. Now I understand that not everybody will agree one hundred percent, I'm not naive to that. But I do feel that we need to, and I think that we all do, take that very seriously. I think it's important to take care of what we have and to look at, you know, a full report or analysis of what renovation could be. That's where I stand on this, I feel that we just have some unanswered questions. And also, I, I very much support a tour of the public or having some access to the courthouse while maintaining safety. Because I don't feel that we should just have people in and out, in and out, in and out, and, you know, people still have important jobs to do there. And it should be in a safe and reasonable space to do so. That being said, I just want to state and comment on Roberta and our, our staff. This has been a project that has been going for a long time. And I feel that Roberta just took the direction she was provided to get us, you know, where we are today. And so I don't want to discount anybody's hard work and efforts, especially Jason and people that have come and gone since from the county. So, you know, I don't want anybody to feel that their time was wasted on that. Anytime that we're looking at improvements or options, you know, that's, that's good work on the county, it's providing options to the county. So with that being said, I just want to say that, again, I'm, I think that, you know, what we discussed, the economic impact analysis, looking at detailed, you know, schematics or whatever of the building and what it would take, that's kind of where I stand today. Thank you.
Okay. I've written a few things down, a lot of things down, actually. So it's going to echo some of the commissioner's statements and contradict some of them. The turnout at the town halls was, was good, especially in Carlsbad, Artesia not so much, but that, I think that was to be expected because this is an issue that while it's Eddie County, seems to have a more direct impact on Carlsbad. Jameson Lucas made a comment from, it's from the Historic Society of Leve, but about the, the building, the courthouse, the WPA constructing benches and some of the other things inside that courthouse, that was a very enlightening and something that I actually would like to receive more information on. With that said, most of the people who spoke were those directly impacted by the courthouse and its location. Others had personal history and memories from the courthouse and its previous uses. Equal access to justice was a point that was reiterated many times and on the surface, something that I can say I hadn't even considered. It was said that many have to walk to court to appear, whether it be for jury, jury duty or their own case. And I'm not doubting the truth of that in the slightest bit. However, this courthouse is a district courthouse, which serves an area much larger than the city of Carlsbad. I do not believe that moving the courthouse two point one miles south hurts anyone outside of the people who live inside the city of Carlsbad. We could also make public transit more available for the new complex, so I feel this argument, while heard, is unsubstantiated. Another common point of contention was the impact of moving the courthouse would have on downtown businesses and restaurants. My family owns three businesses downtown, and we disagree with this point. We don't feel that the people are flocking to these downtown businesses from the courthouse nor the county administration building. And I can say with certainty that we should be listening to the actual business owners, not just people who have imagined this as a side effect of a proposed relocation. An economic impact study would be great here, and it's something that I think we need to have. I can certainly appreciate people's memories and passion for the courthouse when they were growing up. However, as it was so eloquently stated by constituent in Artesia, I too am a lifelong Carlsbad resident. And until this issue was brought forth, I had only been in the courthouse one other time. And I can say that most people my age share the same sentiments. This building is not in any danger with this commission. But those, but as those getting involved get younger, if there isn't a sense of attachment or draw to the building, it could be at risk with future commissions who do not share the same ideas and beliefs as we do. It was said multiple times that the courthouse is the heart and the lifeblood of this community. And I cannot disagree with that anymore. This courthouse is a beautiful historic building, but that's what it is, it's a building. The heart and soul of this community are the people who work in the potash, nuclear and oil and gas industries that provide industry and opportunity, not only for the men and women who feed off of them, but also for the many, many, many direct, or many of the ancillary businesses that also feed off of them, including the downtown businesses and restaurants. That is the true lifeblood of the community, the people are the lifeblood and the heart of the community, not a building. There are no restaurants south of town, we heard that one multiple times, except there's multiple restaurants south of town. And this is also a building block of the community, as the town grows south, businesses and restaurants will follow suit to follow, to suit the needs of the community. This is how growth occurs. With all that said, I'm an elected official, I was elected by the citizens of the county. And I wholeheartedly believe in listening to their concerns and in making my decisions based off their wants, as well as the facts that I've been presented, all the while being a good steward of the county's money. I agree that we don't need this courthouse now, tomorrow, not in five years, maybe in ten, but definitely in fifteen. And this is one of the rare occasions that government has the opportunity, opportunity to be proactive and not reactive to a problem. As we continue to grow and expand, this will be a problem. I think it would be nice to look back and say, wow, we appreciate that somebody had the foresight to see where this community is going. With all that said, there's been so many people that have reached out in opposition to this, and I think that has to be taken into consideration. So this is a rare time where my vote and my personal feelings wouldn't align. But we've all heard lots of different things that have been brought up by the commission today, and I think we need further information before we can make a good decision. I think we need an economic impact study, I think we need to have options. And thi- this is one thing that my biggest drawback and I think where we probably failed the most, is we didn't have a true alternative use for the courthouse. If we were to move out of that move south, what would happen to the building? The comment was said, I believe it was Judge Riley that said, if we were to move out, it hasn't been maintained that great now, what's to make us think or have any faith that it would be taken care of while we're gone? I can't disagree with that, I think that's a very valid concern. And in my opinion, that building and its integrity is something that should be at the forefront of the commission's mind as well as the, the use of it. So I would like a true alternative proposal for what the, set in stone, what the courthouse could be used for if it was to be moved, along with an economic impact study. With those things said, I don't think that we can vote on this today, and I would like to look for a motion for it to be tabled.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second.
But I would, and I'd like to add to that, until we complete all the proper studies.
Yes.
May, economic impact study, an engineering study as to what the structure looks like today and what would need to be done going forward. All those impact studies that we need and the cost associated with that. So that's my motion.
I think I was just going to ask you to add that.
Perfect.
Hey, Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
And Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next on our agenda is consideration of new detention center. Again, without, with not reiterating everything, we already went through the presentation, we brought this back on the April, or we brought this to you guys on the April sixteenth meeting. Same as the courthouse, we're bringing this back for your individual consideration for a new detention center.
This one hasn't had as much contention, does anybody have anything more that they would like to add to this?
I would add one point. This jail was built in ninety-two, is that right, or opened in ninety-two, ninety-three?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three. So the one thing, and you just kind of hit on it, is that was thirty-one years ago. And we're building a new jail because of our location, because it can't expand, because the county has grown, because our issues have grown within the county as to whom we're keeping at the jails. So that's the one thing, when we're talking courthouse, we're talking all these other things. I would hate for a commission to have to be sitting here in twenty or thirty years, having to spend these kinds of monies because we didn't make sure, we did everything we could to foresee what's coming. Does that make sense? Uh, and to put all the things that we just talked about need to line. So, you know, had we moved a jail out, and I think that was a big discussion back then, according to some of the folks that have called me, I wish the jail had been put out there thirty-one years ago. Which is probably where it should have been thirty-one years ago.
Uh, I totally agree with that. I think that there needs to be, as we design it, when we finalize, finalize the design, I think we need the input from our warden and other experts in, in prison facilities and detention facilities. And I think that uh, we need to do it right the first time. And we also need to build it for expansion. I mean, buildings can be built so that they're not just today's building, they can also be expanded to tomorrow's building. And I think that we need to look at that. I think that to move it is imperative from downtown Carlsbad. Uh, I mean, there's been instances of where we've had the, uh, our deputies have had to chase inmates through the middle of town on foot and that's just not something that we want happening. Uh, whether it's tourists or, or citizens of Eddie County, we don't want that happening. So, uh, I think that, that to move it is the only way to go.
And I agree, uh, um, since my time coming on commission, this has been a high priority and it was strictly about detention. I know I've talked to the warden multiple times, I've toured the facility, I've talked to multiple staff members. My position has always been about the safety of employees and inmates when it comes to the detention center functioning right now. Not so much that it's an ice war in the middle, middle of town. I don't believe it. I, I feel like it's a maintained building. It's about feasibility of its use. And I think that the warden has been pretty active in developing the plan, um, of the facility that's being proposed. And that I do believe that it has the ability to be added on to in the future, correct? Um, but the one thing that I think that we have to explore is what was brought up by, um, Mr. Banks, which was the, uh, public defender, talking about inmates are released twenty-four hours a day. So if it's cold outside, if it's raining, if it's whatever, I do feel we need to explore opportu- or options of how we can get people back into town versus releasing them on the side of the road at the highway. Um, I think that there's probably a reasonable solution that we can come up with. Um, I support moving forward with it. I have from the beginning, but those are just some little, um, areas that came up that I think we need to have a solution to.
I've said it before, I'll say it one more time. You shouldn't be able to check your mail, go to the bank and visit your family member in jail on the same walk. I think we're, I think this is much needed. Uh, with that said, I'll look for a motion to approve the consideration of a new detention center.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a sec. Ms. Roberta?
I just have one comment before voting on. Uh, I just wanted to state that because the courthouse is tabled at this time and you guys are making the motion to approve detention center. The county does have the funding for the detention center and would not have to bond. Um, so I don't know if you want to include that in your motion. Um, even further than that, the process before that, doing the civil part of everything out there, whether it's only the detention center at this point since you've made a motion, or if it's another building, um, the county also has that funding as well to, uh, to start that process. And just know that, um, I would be bringing any final, um, designs conceptual and is anything back for the commission consideration moving forward.
Let's add that to the motion then. Um, motion to approve the consideration of the new detention center using the cash on hand where we don't have to go out for a bond for this portion of the project.
I'll resecond that.
You're comfortable with that motion?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, last building to consider, um, for the complex is consideration of new administration slash facilities building. Again, just remember the facilities building, we did have to include in here because we do have to have a separate bay area for our facilities and emergency management area. Um, again, we were talking about, um, the administration building being roughly over, you know, forty-five million dollars. Including with the facilities, you're looking at about fifty-four million dollars. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chairman.
You want a motion or?
No, I'm just looking at any, anybody have any input on this?
Totally in favor of doing this. Everybody's tripping over each other. I mean, they have a big deal. There's no place to put them in here. This will free up a lot of room for other businesses to move into in this area. I, uh, I think it's all overdue. The reason that courthouse is empty, all the empty rooms is because we moved out of there, we ran out of room and we're here. We're in the same situation now that we were when we moved out of there. Which proves the point that Cineader was an outgrower of everything. Cause that pool of oil we're sitting on in the Permian Basin is not going anywhere.
I'm, I'm good. I'm ready for a motion.
I have one question. Have we, um, just because Ms. Jennifer Ferguson had reached out to me, um, about this. Did we, and maybe I just don't recall, but did we look at options of expanding this building and moving back, you know, into this parking area?
That was a discussion years ago, back in twenty seventeen, when this got brought up in the first place about a new detention center. It was the idea of possibly building a new administration right next to us at the parking lot and demoing this one. There were talks about that, but that's all that there was, were just discussions of that. Of course, that never grew legs to even came to county commissioners' consideration at that time.
Do we own this whole block?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Hopefully.
So, we do have areas to expand. If we wanted to.
And I think that was one of my questions is what kind of space would that look like? Uh, if, if we were to build on this, like, like the, like the emails said, build on this parking lot right next door, does that give us the space with the, the bays and everything else that we're trying to consolidate and give us the possibility to, you know, again, I think everyone on this board hates to grow government, but as we've seen, we've had to grow departments because of unfunded mandates. And so does that give us the option to continue to grow and can you have space?
And of course, that, that is an option about expanding. When you say expanding, putting a whole other building, you know, bigger than this, you know, would it fit there? Or are you just talking about expanding this current building? The biggest reason we talked about doing the administration out at the south end is because we have several buildings. We have this one, we have D W I, we have clerks, we have the facilities, we have Main Street that houses OEM. So we have all those buildings that we're trying to maintain. And again, trying to again, have the space fit our needs rather than building something where we can all be housed in one area and this, you know, being able to utilize the space that we actually need. That's always been the biggest thing. Cause of course, yeah, you could probably build another building right here, lose parking space, but you're still gonna be again, where you guys are talking about, in that foresight of ten to fifteen years from now, if the county grows. We have just been expanding, expanding more. And again, we've just been piecemealing all these things together. We make these smaller models to house people. We move people from one building to another. So that was the thought behind the administration building. But has it been seriously considered as far as doing engineering architectural plans? No, it has not been that seriously considered.
Well, I could have heard to add on it, so. I'll leave this up to y'all.
You looking for a motion?
Well, I think it's tough in some, some aspects, um. I think getting rid of this building is one of those things that, that's going to need, the, the building is, is in pretty bad shape. It doesn't fit us. There's nothing here. So, if the original talk was, let's build on demolish this building and put a parking lot on top of it, I couldn't agree more that we no longer, and I, I've said it since day one, I don't think the county should own near as many buildings as we do at the moment. I, I think those should go into the private sector because the private sector is able to utilize those buildings to do business and, and to do things and help grow, uh, Carlsbad and Eddie County the way that, um, it probably should be. Whereas government should not be growing our economy. And I think most folks would agree with that. Until it comes to, they wanna per, they want us to take up all these old buildings, um, and put our stuff in it. I, I don't agree with that concept at all. Um, I want a building that we can grow into, um, that we can continue if we had to grow as the county grows, which the county is gonna grow. I want to put us in the best spot to have great facilities so that, again, as we've, I've said on the other two, I don't want to come back in twenty, well, I'm not coming back in twenty years. I won't be on the commission, but I don't want the commission to have to come back in twenty years and go, oh, we missed this. We should have moved out because we could, we could expand, we could add to the building. And I don't see that happening here. If we were to put it on this parking lot and in fifteen years, already parking is difficult when you come here. I'm sure some folks, when we have a full room, um, I get here early and I park as far away as I can to leave room for everyone else showing up to talk to us. Uh, parking's difficult. So I don't see that helping resolve anything by putting a building next door. I just wanna make sure, am I correct on that?
Yeah, and that, that's always been another consideration is the parking. Because again, even if you expand it, you're losing parking. If you build over here, you still have the same amount of parking, cause you're still working with the less than one acre that we have right here in between these specific three buildings.
You know, I'm, I'm kinda like that. I, I think that whatever we do, and, and I'm also moving it south and, and, and making it so that the commission chambers has room for everybody that wants to be here. And, and that's just not the case in what we have here. And I think that it could be two, three times larger than this so that we can, people aren't standing out in the hallway when we have important issues to discuss. And we need to facilitate that, whatever the answer is.
When I do feel that there's opportunities for safety as well of the employees and parking and, and like you discussed with us, you know, putting the busiest sections of the administration building downstairs so it's easily accept, acceptable or accessible to the public. I mean, these are just, you know, small things that have turned into reasonable issues. So I don't have any issue moving and providing employees the space that they need to do their jobs.
I appreciate everybody's, um, ideas and thoughts and perspective regarding this. Um, with that, I'd like to see a motion to approve the consideration of a new administration facilities building.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass, I don't know if we need to make an amendment to that. I just wanted to make sure that we have the language in there again, just like the detention center. The county would have the cash to cover this cost and not have to bond this specific building out.
Yes.
Do we have to?
Maybe a motion in a second and do it again.
Okay.
Or you can do a separate motion to go ahead and cover it based on fact. It's already been approved.
Let, let's add an additional motion to the consideration for a new administration facilities building, that the county will use cash and not look for a bond, seek a bond for the approval of this project, for the cost of this project.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
And Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, we'll move into our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget, uh, review, discussion and direction workshop number one. Ms. Brianna Shields. Before Brianna gets started, I just wanted to, uh, say Brianna did a wonderful job this year, her first year doing the budget. The budget process went very smoothly this year. Um, didn't have a lot of issues, um, worked very well with elected officials and department heads on the budget. So, thank you Brianna for everything you did.
Um, what I'm passing around right now, the first page is a, um, budget summary, just kind of a high level of the kind of whole page changes. The second page is, um, personnel budget changes that the HR director put together to kind of really detail any personnel changes. And the remaining eight pages are, um, more detailed by department, um, budget changes for your reference as we kinda walk, work through this. Um, like Roberta said, we've reached out to, um, department heads for input while compiling this year's budget. Um, Roberta and I have done a few reviews, um, to kind of, uh, as I learned and get through this and had some follow-up discussions and made a few adjustments. Um, this workshop is to review the overall budget to ensure, you know, questions or concerns are coming from the budget. Um, so we'll just kinda dive in. The, um, countywide revenue for next fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is at three hundred and sixty-one million with countywide expenses at four hundred and eighty-seven million. Um, this is a little bit high in comparison to this current fiscal year, but this is taking into account a hundred and ten million dollar new complex budget. So the transfers of that kinda really inflates the numbers if you are comparing year over year. We are presenting a balanced budget for the general fund at a hundred and forty-seven million. This is a twenty-nine million dollar increase over the current budget year. Um, we are increasing budget for all revenue sources, um, for gross receipts. Um, current budget year, we're, we're, uh, budgeting two point eight million monthly. Um, we've been coming in about five point six million on average monthly. So we're increasing our budget for next year to three point two million monthly. For the current year for oil and, oil and gas, I'll speak mostly to oil at this point, but, um, we budgeted sixty-five dollars per barrel for this current budget year. We've been averaging seventy-seven dollars per barrel and we are, um, putting in for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget at sixty-nine dollars per barrel. So not quite meeting the actuals from year to date, but are increasing it and trying to remain conservative at the same time. Um, the monthly volume, we budgeted sixteen million per month this year. Um, we've been averaging twenty-two and a half million per month. We are budgeting for next fiscal year at nineteen million. So again, increasing it, but being conservative, just thinking does change. Um, we also increased property tax by six and a half million to better align to this year's actuals and kind of the forecast for, um, next year's calculations. Uh, moving into expenses, our personnel budget is sitting at fifty point, fifty-four point five million, which is about a two point nine million dollar increase. Um, a big hitter of that is insurance premiums. They increased twenty-two percent over the original budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. There's also a para increased, um, as we continue to increase the, um, contributions for para. Step increases are three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, longevity pay is at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. We did have some reclassifications from department heads that came to two hundred and forty thousand. And nine positions were added, um, five in fire rescue, one sheriff, two in the admin and, and one in public works, which we'll, I'm gonna come back to that at the end of this, but, um, for about one million dollars for new positions. And again, I, this does include a hundred and ten million dollars for the new complex. So we can probably, depending on how things move forward, adjust that, make budget adjustments if we go improve this or kind of how that falls out, except.
Yeah, if and when they do the motion to approve the interim, we'll have them make special motions to include some of these changes.
I guess, are there any questions? Do you have, go further to departments or?
Yeah.
No questions yet.
And so the note I was gonna come back to is once we, we're doing a final review of the budget before we came to here today, um, we did find kind of two personnel issues that when we make a motion to approve this, if we get there, um, we'll have to kind of note them. We do not need a new public's work position, so that will reduce the budget by eighty-three thousand dollars. And there was a new Department of Labor ruling that increases the salary threshold for exempt employees. And so there is one employee that we're gonna have to, And so there is one employee that we're going to have to, we're choosing to adjust by about, it'll be a six thousand dollar impact overall increase to keep them at the exempt threshold for the labor ruling. So if we move forward, approve the budget, we'll have to make a motion to amend a net seventy-seven thousand dollars for these labor changes, if that's okay.
A few other things, just to hit on some of the PSAs that we contribute to for services that are provided in the county. We were asked for some new money from a few different agencies. In general, we kept everyone's funding the same. There were a couple of changes that we did make. We did increase the main streets to thirty thousand dollars each, they were both at twenty-five thousand dollars each. We did, we were requested for some new funding from Southeast New Mexico Community Action Corps. They did come and make a presentation to commission. We did include some new funding of twenty thousand dollars for Southeast New Mexico. We did also include some new funding for Community of Hope in the amount of four thousand five hundred. They are the agency that deals with the homeless people here in town. But all the rest of the other funding essentially stayed the same for the PSAs. And I don't know if you wanted to go over some of the bigger ticket capital items that departments are looking at this year?
In the upcoming budget, we do have four million set aside for the fourth judge remodel for the courthouse. We do have about eleven million dollars in road construction maintenance budgeted. Fire, fire and rescue has, no, I don't have the total million, I think it's about twenty-eight million dollars that they're going to have in capital spending. They have some cash reserves that they're planning on spending down, eleven million towards the Otoka station, six and a half million towards Station Three new. There's about eight million dollars in new heavy equipment, pampers, tanks, ambulances, so they have some big capital spend coming up in this next year.
And you have to remember too, if fire excise or just fire in general, a lot of their stuff they order in advance and it's not being paid for for eighteen months, two years down the road. So a lot of that money gets rolled over year after year. So especially like in a year like this where we have several years being rolled into, you know, moving forward, you tend to have a lot of that capital in one year. And if you guys do have any other questions, you do have the opportunity to ask not only Brianna, myself, department heads, elected officials, if you have any questions. You do have some of the more detailed itemized stuff for each department in front of you.
No, the fairgrounds, fairgrounds has been asked for a little additional funding.
Right, so the fairgrounds in the past, we've provided them a hundred thousand dollars. This year, they asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars specifically to just put on the county fair. So you have to remember that's separate. We are, we did do an RFP. We are in contract negotiations with the fair. So the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they are asking for is just to put the fair on. And then we will be doing some further negotiations for the actual, the management of the grounds there at the fairgrounds that we'll be working with them on.
I assume I do deal with just.
But for the fair specifically, there's a hundred and fifty thousand only for the fair side of it.
Which is a fifty thousand dollar increase, yeah.
So we are working with them on their buildings and their ridges?
Correct, yes.
On the capital request, the bathroom for a million and a half?
That, the Artesia shooting range, that is a grant, a federal grant that we received that'll cover one point two million of it, we'll have to cash match three hundred thousand of it. So we got extension on that funding, it was actually supposed to be spent by June thirtieth, but we got extension to finish that out next year.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's why I was like, what?
Working the same thing on a park, I'm like, Mrs. Patton, you're getting crazy.
Does anybody have any further questions?
This portion is, if you don't have any other questions or it's just for discussion and FYI essentially, it's just for the workshop portion. So if you don't have any more, we can move to the next agenda item.
Let's do that.
So the next agenda item is the approval of the resolution R twenty-four, forty-eight for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five interim budget approval. If you guys don't have any questions, I would ask that you make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five interim budget with the changes of a net change of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents for personnel. Along with the hundred and ten million dollars that is budgeted for the complex. The only change there would be that instead of splitting that money up into three buildings, which would be the courthouse, administration and detention, that that money would be split into two. That would be the only change, the funding portion wouldn't change, it would just be where that money was going now, now that we've tabled the courthouse.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item, we have treasurer's report for March twenty-two, twenty-four. This has been distributed to all the commissioners, so it is only FYI unless you have any other questions.
Anybody have anything they wanted to discuss on that?
Okay, next we will move into the revenue report for March twenty-two, twenty-four, Ms. Brianna.
All right, March revenue, general fund. Came in at six million dollars and oil and gas receipts were at six point nine million. Gross receipts, six million, nine point six million dollars year-to-date increase over prior year, about a twenty-three percent increase over prior year. Oil and gas receipts for the month are at six point nine, ninety-nine percent of that is production based on December production values, which came in at twenty-four point seven million barrels at seventy-one dollars per barrel. It was, it was a high month in comparison, yeah. Any questions on the revenue?
Questions? Look for a motion to approve the March twenty-two, twenty-four revenue report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Next, we have budget versus actuals, March twenty-two, twenty-four revenue and expenses.
Budgeted revenue is at two hundred and sixty-two million, our actual revenue numbers are at three hundred and twenty-seven million. We are a hundred and twenty-five percent collected with three months to go in the year. Budgeted expenses are two hundred and ninety million, actual expenses are a hundred and ninety million. We are sixty-five percent spent. Expenses less transfers are at forty-two percent. General fund revenue is at a hundred and forty-five percent collected and general fund expenses without transfers are fifty-eight percent spent. Any questions?
Excellent. Anybody questions, comments? For a motion to approve the budget versus actuals, March revenue and expenses.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Brianna's going to be up here for a marathon. Next one, we have fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, third quarter lodgers tax report.
Fiscal, this fiscal year beginning cash balance was at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Year to date, we've received seventy-one thousand dollars. We've paid out ninety-two thousand dollars, leaving us with a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar cash balance as of March thirty-first. At this point, there was, I don't believe anything committed for the rest of the year.
So the hundred and nineteen unencumbered?
Has there been more requests this year than previous years?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question. Okay, yes.
We have had a few requests over the fiscal year. This particular meeting, we were supposed to have a meeting Thursday and we didn't receive any requests for the meeting this week. So we touched with the board, canceled the meeting and are looking forward to hopefully some submissions for the August meeting.
So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four, third quarter lodgers tax report.
So moved.
Second.
Please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have approval to become fiscal agent for New Mexico HIDA. Ms. Brianna?
Do you want to join in? We've been asked to become the fiscal agent for the, the high level of New Mexico HIDA organization. So the ones that give sub recipients to our Pecos Valley Drug Task Force to Region Six, so it's kind of the executive level, executive director level budget, just the operating budget, no labor. They have specific grants that kind of fund that and they've had some turnaround on the purchase process at their current fiscal agent. So after having discussions with them, we feel we can probably meet their needs a little bit better than what where they're currently sitting.
So this is a big deal. I'm chairing the New Mexico HIDA Executive Board again and I'm working very closely with Executive Director Glasby. And we've struggled with having a fiscal agent because the city of Las Cruces, and I hate to even bring it talk disparagingly, but they were very difficult for us to work with. Because I mean, they have a lot of bureaucracy there apparently, from what I was gathering. So, and this is basically just, we would be flowing through cash, well, disbursements in intake. We had a commitment from DEA El Paso to take it over, they got a new special agent in charge there and she wasn't comfortable with it for some strange reason. And I still haven't gotten an answer as to why it was and so Bobby Sullivan and I got to visiting and I started visiting with Roberta. And I said, you know, we can handle this, we're, Lead County is handling Region Six, why can't we handle this? So I negotiated with Will, with the executive director. And HIDA is willing to fund a, another position into finance to help handle this, which is not that huge of a lift. As a matter of fact, it's going to be a big benefit, I think, to our finance department because this person, the only thing I have to assure them is that this person is doing fifty point one percent of their job doing the HIDA. Stuff, the rest can be helping out the county. So I think this is a huge benefit for us. I don't think it's a heavy lift, I've discussed it with Roberta and Brianna. They have a brand new finance director, so this is actually at headquarters in Las Cruces with Will. And I think this is a perfect opportunity where we can grow together and Brianna can work with her, I've met her. Merrily is great, great person, very easy to work with. And this just further shows our commitment to New Mexico HIDA and to our, our commitment, your commitment, county's commitment to drug enforcement operations in New Mexico. And I think this will be, make it very smooth and we won't have a lot of the difficulties we've had in the past with the director's office being able to handle business. I think, I think it's going to be a, a great symbiotic relationship, so.
Yeah, the county has really great experience already doing Region Six and our Pecos Valley Drug Task Force, so we do feel comfortable, I talked to Brianna about it. At this time, you guys just now during the interim approved a grant administration position. So at this time, in talking with Brianna, we're going to utilize that position for now. We do feel that we'll be able to handle with that position, not only countywide grant administration, but to also include the HIDA director level at this, at this time right now. Plus, going back to the administration building, we have nowhere to physically put an extra person in this building anymore unless we stuck him in a closet, so. I think right now that will suffice and we'll see how that works out and we'll be working with HIDA on that position.
We have a great resource with Angie Vickery, Bobby Sullivan's assistant. She is an incredible wealth of knowledge, institutional knowledge with HIDA. And she has, she's more than willing to help out and, and work through and, and make sure that the inner workings that we have are going to mesh with the federal requirements that we have with HIDA.
And I've spoken with her to kind of help the transition period until we can get a grants position filled and kind of, she's going to really help get us in line and train us in the transition, so.
So I'm really proud that we were able, that we're able to offer this to the HIDA board. And those are a bunch of high-level folks there that were like, well, thank y'all. And I said, thank y'all in, in advance if we're going to do this. And so it's good that we, it felt really nice to be able to step up Freddie County and say, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll fill this gap right here for you.
Seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yes.
I have no questions.
Look for a motion for the approval to become the fiscal agent for New Mexico HIDA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have procurement manager reclassification, Brianna?
New to the position, but as I've had some turnover and looking over at department as a whole and aligning roles and responsibilities, I'm looking to cha, reclass the procurement manager just to a procurement administrator, just to kind of get grades and titles and things more aligned. And to allow for upward growth for high performers and create more upward advancement. So this will not be a great change for this position, it's just kind of reworking the tasks and the title.
Questions? For a motion to approve procurement manager reclassification?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have request for special commission meeting.
So now that the interim is approved, the final budget has to be approved before July thirty-first. But I do need some time to get it uploaded to LG, to the system and get it to DFA. So with year end and there's a time crunch there, so I'm requesting a special commission meeting for July twenty-sixth morning to approve Q four budget adjustments for this current fiscal year. Get the Q four DFA report out and approve the final budget with the cash, the appropriate beginning cash balances for the next fiscal year. So the request is for July twenty-sixth meeting if you guys are available.
What with the twenty-sixth?
That's a Friday.
Friday.
It's Friday.
I can make that work.
Same time, eight-thirty, is that what we're asking?
If eight, if eight-thirty will work, you think?
Sure, I can make that work.
The meeting will usually last about thirty minutes?
So look for a motion to approve a special commission, commission meeting on July twenty-sixth at eight-thirty AM.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, I need somebody to say.
Next, we have reclassification of public information coordinator to public information officer. So this position has been around for several years. We originally, this was originally a new position several years ago. It was the public information officer slash oil and gas liaison. We hired that position in order to have better communication specifically with the oil and gas industry to. We hired that position in order to have better communication specifically with the oil and gas industry to make contacts for lobbying efforts and for communication countywide. That position then got reclassified as a public information coordinator, which took a lot of those tasks and communication off, separating the oil and gas, no longer doing that. But that position never grew to essentially what it should be. That position has been vacant for quite some time. It has originally been under Community Services. I did move that position under administration within the interim budget. And really what my goal in this position is, I'm now wanting to reclassify it from the coordinator back to the information officer. And what that does is add more tasks and job duties. The goal of this position would be to have a central point of contact, number one, for the entire county, to have one person doing all communication. Right now, we don't, we don't communicate on a countywide basis of putting information out there. As far as public service announcements, a lot of departments do them on their own. We send them to IT, they get uploaded. But even on regular information, things that are going on in the county, we don't as a county communicate with the public at the level that we should be. If we have this type of position, we would have one central person doing all the communication, not only with the elected officials and department heads doing our public service announcements. They'd be on the website, putting information out on the website, on social media, pushing information out on social media, as well as newspapers, talking with the press. All of that would encompass in this one position. And so that's really the goal of doing this, is to have someone who can push a lot of that information out, to get information out to the public, again, being proactive rather than being reactive and having as much information out there to the public as possible.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think that having somebody to, one person to communicate with the public, release, press releases and be active on social media on our behalf would be great. So.
No, I think this is something we've seen done other places and when done well, it's nice to, when there are these other things that happen on Facebook, it's nice to see the public be able to go and find actual information as here's what's happening. I've seen it work really, really well in so many other spots, so glad we're taking this direction. It's important for the public. The public has to know what we're doing.
Yes, it adds transparency in what we do. I think that's paramount.
And just to add to, I mean, obviously, we've always been transparent and it just gives that extra level of just not only having that information every two weeks at a commission meeting, but on a regular basis, day to day, as things come up. Whether they're small or whether they're big, just knowing what's going on in the county as a whole.
Right.
Yeah, I think we found that out in our, in our town hall meetings if people seem to, even though we publish it on our website and stuff, they don't seem to, to really look at that much. But maybe if we do have a Facebook page and we keep it updated and keep them, maybe we could avoid some of that.
Absolutely.
And so I think that that is a very good idea.
But maybe show up at other civic meetings and what have you and say, here's what the county's doing.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, then we'll look for a motion to approve the reclassification of the public information coordinator to a public information officer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, did you second?
Yes.
Okay.
He thought you were going to vote.
I couldn't tell originally what it was. Okay, so Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
And Carlson.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have setting a date for our annual site visit to the Eddy County Detention Center. The commission does this every year on an annual basis. It is required by state statute that the commissioners go and do a detention center visit and then be followed up with an inspection report for that. So I have proposed a date of May twenty-first. It would be during or after our regular scheduled commission meeting next meeting in May, if that all works for you. I think how it's been done in the past, if you would like to continue that, is after the commission meeting. Then we head over to the Detention Center for the annual site visit. Does that work for everybody?
It should work for me.
No, it works for me. Look for a motion to set the, we need a motion for that?
We do, yes.
Look for a motion to set the date for the annual site visit to the Eddy County Detention Center for May twenty-first, following the commission meeting.
I'll make that motion.
A motion in a second.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our twenty twenty-four freeholders board recommendation with Mr. Burns.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll go through this whole thing pretty quick. We, per the direction of the commission, we hold and convene our freeholders to periodically consider roads that are appropriate to essentially abandon or add to our certified county mileage. So we hadn't, we hadn't done this in a few years and we need to get back on track with this. So we identified multiple sections of roads, which we have.
You can scroll up if you want.
As we brought this to them, we, we sent out, we followed the process that we previously established with the commission. And we considered adding four sections of road to the maintenance and we considered abandoning seven. Now with that, after we convened our freeholders, the recommendation is just for two sections of road to be abandoned, even though we considered seven. What, and just to kind of elaborate on this, when we convene freeholders, we, we review the roads, we pull up the maps, we, we and we look at this and as long as it provides, here, I'm sorry, there's your banning, I don't know what y'all are looking at. If it provides access to any part of industry, if it has addresses on it, it provides access to residents, it's usually not the recommendation to abandon a section of road unless it is specifically being requested by a property owner and does not, it does not block access to any other property owners that might be behind that. So with that, the recommendation for abandoning is for two sections of road, is just a little section of Buck Jackson down towards the end that deadends to the state line of Texas, which is literally a three strand fence down there. And then White Bass Road, which is down again on the state line and it deadends in the Pecos River. Those are the only two that we're requesting abandonment as far as road additions. Crystal Drive and Heath Road, essentially what those are is we already have Crystal and Heath in our certified mileage. These are the ends of these roads where they intersect that we're going to. I got pictures. So right here is Crystal and this one's Heath. So we're adding right here towards the end to where these intersect is what we're doing.
Yep, it's only, we're, we only have from Thirteenth Street to Twelfth. And then, so we're adding from Twelfth Street to Heath, which is over here on the right. And then Heath will be, if you jump out of the next one, is right there. Our county road mileage indicates that we only adopted for right there before and now it's all the way down to Crystal. It's a bus route, it's.
When you can see the addresses that it's servicing, it only makes sense that this becomes part of our mileage. Same thing with West and East Promised Land. This is one of the roads that, you know, we previously considered. What happens a lot of times is roads start as driveways and as people develop houses and build their own house, roads become, you know, need to have access to roads so they're not driveways anymore but a maintained road. So that's what East and West Promised Land is. This used to be a driveway down here to the end and now you have eight families that live on there. Same thing with West, you have ten families that live over there. So it ties into our current sections and current roads. So it makes sense that it becomes one of our certified mileage. Just so everyone knows the process, when we start these, as we identify sections, what we end up doing is we gather all the information. We send out certified letters to all the property owners and we let those stay out for about thirty days. We receive comments to the freeholders, to the commissioners, to us. Then we convene the freeholders and with your recommendations today, what we'll do is we'll send out letters as a conclusion for the recommendation from commission, so. We'll stand for questions.
Did you hear back from anyone on any?
The only one that we had some comments from, and Hazer might be able to speak to this a little more, is we did have comments. We had comments on Blevins. So we, that one became a, we found some details going along with that one. And that's why it's on the recommendation to not vacate these. Along, we also had some comments back from Aaron Lost and Rogers and I think we actually included those down here. As we said, if we review these and we see that there's access and farms, you know, that those don't make sense for us to abandon. So it was a pretty concise recommendation to retain those. So like I said, it's not our intention to block anyone. If we have property owners that call and say, hey, this is an access road for me, or hey, we use this road. I mean, we're not in the business of doing less work. We're going to take care of roads.
And you guys have gone out and looked at them and everything?
Yes, yeah, we're on these.
Understand the criteria is that the road's no longer needed or the maintenance and repairs far exceed the value of the road. Additionally, you have to do this, if that, if the road has a value of over five thousand dollars, we've got to get approval from the Department of Finance and Administration, local government division. But that's not going to apply to Catfish because that's a federal road. So we don't own it. So if we abandon, we don't have to talk with DFA. The other one, maybe, is it on BLM land or do you guys know for sure? You'd said you thought it might.
It is, it is BLM. Both of them are BLM.
So we're not going to have to ask DFA. Typically, you have to wait and the abandonment's not complete until we get their approval, but since they're both, they don't belong to us, we can abandon without that problem.
And you can see Buck Jackson right here. We're just taking it from this primary pipeline, whichever one this is, State Line Road that they created down there and we're abandoning it from the bottom here just to the stop line. So that's, we're, yeah, that's ends it at three strand fence.
It is a two track road.
Yeah. Same thing with Catfish here. You see, we're taking this, we're, this is Catfish right here and this is White Bass. It just deadends in the river, so.
And we're not blocking it, we're just, we're just giving up the maintenance on it.
Yes.
For a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four freeholders board recommendations?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Next, we have CAT one forty greater buyout budget adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're bringing this to you. We had previously brought this to you back in March of twenty twenty-three for the approval of the one-year extension for the Cat Blade at the landfill. What this is today is, and at that meeting, you approved the buyout of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So what this is, is the budget adjustment for us to conclude that contract as it's coming due here at the end of May. The reason we didn't budget this last year is because the commission had already approved the budget and we just put in that twenty-third or twenty-first package that we would bring in a budget adjustment at the end of the contract, so.
I'd like the motion to be approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Next, we have budget adjustment for Sandpoint Maintenance Services.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so we've presented and we've discussed that with, with the increase in industry, we see an increase in trash at the landfill. As such, we have requested additional services and equipment out at the landfill to help us maintain the operations that are necessary to maintain our landfill. This was, this was an initiative we started last year with a, to see how much we were going to actually need. Currently, we have an additional compactor, an additional scraper out at the landfill that are helping us run and compact additional and haul daily cover. With that, we've set this up, we budgeted a million dollars. So your request today is, we're coming to you and we've run the compactor and we've run the scraper pretty much both times in addition to our own equipment and personnel. The request today is to cover the hours that necessary to get us through the end of the year. We've put in budget next year what we think it's going to take for additional sources, resources. But this request today is to get us through the remainder of the year or to cover the cost to get us into twenty-four, twenty-five. Is that what we're asking today? It's, it's a trashy business out there and we, it takes a lot. And what's good about this and doing it this way is as we see our increases and decreases with the industry, we see our increases and decreases with trash. And this allows us to ramp up or ramp down whatever necessary to handle what we're experiencing. So this is the request today. I'll stand for questions.
No questions? For a motion to approve the budget adjustment for Sandpoint Maintenance Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, we have a request to set for consideration a public hearing for the ordinance of the twenty-five year non-exclusive franchise agreement for New Mexico Gas Company for the June fourth, twenty twenty-four during regular scheduled commission meeting.
Yes.
Morning Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Coming before you with this request for the set of possible public hearing and consideration meeting for the twenty-five year non-exclusive franchise agreement with New Mexico Gas. Excuse me. This is one of the couple that we had left remaining from previous franchise agreements. We've managed to get this one settled out with Mexico Gas Company and we'd just like to set this for, for hearing.
Let's get it done. I'll look for a motion to, west, to set consideration of public hearings for the New Mexico Gas Company at the June fourth, twenty twenty-four regularly scheduled commission meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We have ConocoPhillips donation grant. Chief Mac?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to bring this to your attention that we did receive a twelve thousand dollar grant this year from ConocoPhillips. Last year, they gave us some money as well, so it allowed us to buy our McGrath video scopes for innovation. So between the two grants, we were able to purchase everything. Awesome.
Great.
And this is just FYI only, so unless you don't have any questions from Chief Mac, just for your information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next, we'll move into our resolution and agreement consent agenda. Unless the Commissioners have any questions or any pull anything, I'll just need a motion in a second for approval.
Questions ready to ask? Look for a motion to approve the resolution and agree, agreement consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Travel request consent agenda.
Anybody have any questions for discussion? Look for a motion to approve a travel request consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have any emergency business today. Only legislative comment I have, obviously, at this time, everybody knows, but for those that don't, Governor Lujan has. Governor, uh, Lujan has called a special session July eighteenth, starting July eighteenth, uh, for lawmakers to discuss public safety issues. So past that, I don't have anything else for legislative comments. Um, we'll move into elected official and department comments, announcements and updates.
I'll come back up, good morning again. And thank you again for, uh, your consideration on the HIDA, the HIDA grant and handling that, that's gonna make a big, big difference. Uh, I've already texted Will, the executive director, and he he said, thank you very, very much, that takes a load off his mind. Um, I just went last, well, no, I was gone for a little bit. The week before last, I went to Las Cruces, uh, the US Attorney there in that, in our district, uh, had an award ceremony. Three of our people, two deputies and our task force commander received awards from the US Attorney. That was a big, big deal. And Commander Leos, uh, actually received the highest award, uh, a lifetime achievement award, uh, which is they don't, those aren't giveaways, those are, you you really have to to come up on the radar. And, uh, he was actually put in for it by one of the US Assistant Attorneys, Assistant, uh, AUSA, Assistant US Attorney, who's worked with us and for, before I came here, she's been working with us for decades. So I was very proud of that, um, I wanted to to definitely bring up Commander Leos. Uh, and and he, uh, also Deputy Moreno received an award and I'm, I just drew a blank. I should have written it down here. Well, I'll tell you later, I I've had a lot go on, I apologize. Um, also, I will be traveling, uh, on the National Sheriff's dime. Uh, I'll be traveling to DC, which I I really have been to DC a lot here lately, but I'm I'm, this one is a a big deal for me. I'm gonna go and represent, uh, the nation sheriffs at the National Law Enforcement Memorial. And I'll, it'll be my solemn duty to read, uh, some of the names, uh, that are going on the wall there. So I I was, it it really is an honor to be selected to go do that. So I just wanna let you know, I'm gonna go represent Eddie County one more time in in DC. Um, we have received all of our vehicles that, uh, were allotted and we were finally caught up from all the budgets. Uh, they're, they're currently, the the holdup is as usual with the supply chain thing. Uh, is getting all the equipment installed in them, but that's slowly being worked through and, uh, we're getting them out on the road. So when we purchase our new ones, when y'all approve the budget and we get ready to buy some new, we're we're gonna be caught up. And it looks like we'll be able to stay caught up. Uh, we're currently doing testing for a handler for our third K nine that we have coming on board. Karen, I think I've spoken about her before to you, uh, we ought to be getting her fairly soon. I was asked, uh, by National Sheriffs to, uh, potentially sit on a, uh, National Behavioral Assessment Board, which I'm I'm really interested in because this is behavioral health is a huge issue right now. I think that's part of the driving factor behind crime and behind, uh, drug use. Uh, I'm I'm sure Commissioner Cordova could speak for days on that. Uh, so I'm really interested in 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 sitting on this board, uh, this national board and and helping come up with some, uh, solutions, hopefully, that we can maybe bring back to New Mexico. Um, one thing I would put out there is, uh, for, and I I've spoken to to Billy about this. National Sheriff's Association, uh, we're one of the few counties that sheriffs don't have the jails. You, most of the sheriffs are in charge of jails across the nation. But that's a huge part of National Sheriff's Association is corrections. And they'll be a huge resource for us when we go to designing a jail and some best practices and they can, there there's different vendors and everything. And and I think, I think there'll be a good resource for us is basically what I'm saying. So don't, don't, don't feel shy, I can get you in touch with whoever, and Billy, of course, with whoever we need to talk to. Um, and coming up in June, the seventeenth through the twentieth, uh, we'll be in San Miguel County for the New Mexico Counties, uh, Annual Conference. Uh, it's gonna be in Las Vegas, New Mexico, unfortunately, it's gonna be in Nevada, but, no, I think it's gonna be a good time. Uh, Las Vegas is very excited about it. They, uh, they got put off because they were supposed to do it when COVID hit and we had to cancel a a conference. So they've been kinda waiting and, uh, they they've said that we're gonna be very impressed with with how they host and the things that are gonna go on. So I encourage everybody to to go attend at least a little bit, part of, hopefully you won't get sick this time.
We'll try.
We'll try. Um, and then on a not-so-good note, uh, I just wanted to remind everybody, May fifteenth, I didn't, I didn't even realize this, I thought it was gonna be in July first, like all the other laws that were passed. But the seven-day waiting period, uh, for firearms purchases, that goes into effect in May fifteenth, unless you have an FFL or it's very strange, concealed carry, you don't have to wait. Um, or you're law enforcement, selling to law enforcement. Or if you were selling to a direct, I I mean, a a a family member, and it's very, very narrowly specified who a family member is considered. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, I've been contacted by a few, uh, reps and senators saying, hey, do you guys have all the information? I'm like, no, the unfortunately, that's not been well-publicized. Uh, so I've had questions at the gun shops as well. So May fifteenth, that is the cutoff date. I don't know what the mechanism is gonna be for enforcing it. I don't know how they're gonna monitor it, I really don't. So I just want Uh, that, well, that will effectively shut down the gun show, uh, sales, i- in my opinion. Which I think a big concern was about the, uh, background checks being done. But the gun shows that I've been to, the background checks are getting done. I mean, and especially now that it's a law, but even beforehand, I I saw background checks being done because they were, uh, licensed vendors and and they didn't wanna get in trouble. So I guess we'll see how it works out. But unless there's any questions for me, again, thank you for your support of HIDA, that's a big deal.
I just wanna let the Commissioners know that we started voting this morning at four o'clock. So, um, for this weekend, next week, it'll be eight to five, Monday through Friday. And then starting the eighteenth, we'll begin our extended early voting hours, that'll be the first Saturday that we're open from eight to four, both in Carlsbad and in Artesia. So I encourage everyone to vote and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you for the approval for the detention, uh, I think it's a long time coming. You look at the county, you look at sort of location, this growth, growth and growth, uh, and kinda piecemeal in it, laygoing it. It's been kinda tough, uh, for the county, uh, when you have integrated systems not working or one's ten years older than the other. So I think this is gonna take care of a lot of that, that aspect of that. So I know the staff's been highly watching this, we've been talking about it often. Um, and we have been involved in with preliminary designs and some, uh, layouts, uh, for a long time, to be honest with you. I I have been, at least with the detention, even with the municipal neighbors that's here. So appreciative of that. Um, looking forward for the tour, couple weeks when you guys come around. Um, I've been working, if you've heard, uh, the sheriff's, uh, uh, speech with the Ignite program, we're one step closer, this thing has been like pulling teeth, it's just been a struggle. But we're getting there. A lot of it goes with the, uh, application to the software, to the tablets, as well as, uh, remote, uh, memory to certificates and it's it's, it's been a struggle, but we're getting there. So I'm I'm hopeful within, I wanna say at least ninety days, we'll have that program, uh, leased on the tablets with some kinda layouts for the inmates and then some kind of, uh, I call it fanfare, we'll lease an out and have something come out. Those people are fantastic with, uh, you know, trying to get you, get you on board, get you moving and, uh, and you get passionate a little bit when you look at all the other sheriffs and the other people that have it from different states. And and they've been creative with a lot of things. And a lot of it goes back into just recidivism, what can we do while they're in jail to try to keep them or help them not come back? So, uh, we can, we can do that, that's, that's definitely a plus, so.
Thank you for that, Billy, that's a big deal. I guess Swanson will come down here for the, I'll make him come down.
We're getting there, it's been been tough, we're getting there. Any questions? No, I think it's a long time coming, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, just wanted to take about fifteen seconds to tell you that we built a gun enforcement position and a planter position. I'll introduce Lennon Blackman, our Newt County Planner.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Great.
All I want while I
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seen none, unfortunately, my comments are not as short as theirs. There's a lot that's been going on, so I have a page and a half of comments that, uh, I'd like to address. Um, the clerk already mentioned about early voting, so thank you for mentioning that, uh, that in-person, early voting starts today. Um, I don't see the trigger, I think she left, but I just wanted to let everyone know, we did send out a per public service announcement um, on dealing property tax auctions, um, it's gonna be held May twenty-ninth here in the chambers at ten AM. Along with that public service announcement, we just sent along some information to be aware of fraudulent tax notices and what to look out for because people have been getting those, those have been being disseminated, so we just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. So we did put out a public service announcement for that. Happy to announce that emergency management, we've finally moved them into our new building here on Main Street, um, so they have some space, which also freed up some space here. Um, Mr. McCroskey's been really good in working with me, um, I've been working with him on trying to move some of his people around to accommodate for hopefully this new PIO position. So we've been doing a lot of moving, um, here in administration and over at emergency management. Uh, so I just wanna say thanks to Trent, him and his team have been a huge help because there's been a lot of moving parts here in the last few months, um, moving people around. Um, I was asked to attend and speak at the Leadership New Mexico here a couple weeks ago. Um, one of our very own, Chief Mack, he was in attendance, he was part of that leadership group, it was very interesting. Um, they had like a government days out at Chevron. Um, and they did like a virtual field tour, it was very, very informative. Um, we had presentations from Patrick Killen, um, and our Chevron Mid Continent Business Unit, um, Ryder Booth. He was very, very informative, he gave an amazing presentation on oil and gas, very smart gentleman. Um, just to hit some of the highlights that just kinda stuck out, some of the stuff we already know, some of it was just very interesting. He talked about how fifty percent of Chevron's capital will be in the Permian Basin here in the next five years. Um, he talked really heavily about how much oil we take out and how much is still left in the ground. A a lot of people were really shocked and this is where he did a really good job because we had a really divi- diverse group of people there at the Leadership New Mexico. Everyone from all over New Mexico, whether it's north, south, east, west, in a lot of different positions. We had, you know, commissioners, mayors, we had, um, different leadership people there. So with a wide range of their thoughts on oil and gases as well too, we had a lot of people speak up in that Leadership New Mexico. And this is where he did a very good job on presenting the information and showing Chevron's support also for green energy as well too. He also talked about like nine percent of oil is being taken out of the ground, so there's still a ton of oil, you know, obviously still left in the ground. Um, he put the world into perspective, he talked a lot about cars and electricity all over the world. And just like for a very small example, he talked about different countries and how there's one car per thousand people. And if one of those countries changed and just did two cars in that specific country, that would change the world's dynamic immensely. And so he kinda put it in perspective, just talking about different countries and what they have compared to us, um, here in the United States and how we live compared to the rest of the world, it's not normal, right? We're kind of the abnormal, um, piece of that puzzle. He talked a lot about nuclear, low-carbon solutions, uh, storage of wind and solar, which needs a breakthrough. So he really did speak a lot on green energy and how Chevron still supports that and how they wanna move forward with that as well too. Um, he also talked about advancement in building efficiency and how it's a key to drive down consumption. It was really quite interesting too, um, especially because we were talking about the complex here and that's kinda been a hot topic as well. Um, he was just talking about assets and how long the assets are, and buildings obviously are one of our assets that lost the longest, which they also consume the most energy, so if you have obviously more efficient buildings and if a a lot of people all over the United States, all over the world have more efficient buildings, that drives that consumption way down. So he just had a lot of interesting things, I don't do any of it justice by the bullet points I just talked about, but it was just very interesting. Um, we also heard from Superintendent Caitlin Maxwell, um, and Operations Advisor Travis Stevens, they just talked about Oil and Gas one oh one um, and just showed some pictures of wellheads and what they are and described some of that stuff. Um, so that was just really interesting. Um, we did receive information after our last commission meeting, which was, you know, unfortunate after the fact that the Village of Hope was doing a cleanup April twentieth through May fifth, so it's kind of in between our two commission meetings. But we were able to reach out to Public Works and Jason and his team provided some roll-off containers for their cleanup at the Village of Hope, so. Um, I did wanna confirm, um, that we are gonna have a quorum on the June eighteenth meeting. Like the sheriff said, we have New Mexico Counties, um, during that time, that's the day it starts. Um, as far as I know, we are going to have three Commissioners here, myself, I'll still be here, so we do still plan on having our June eighteenth meeting, even though we probably will have a lot of people absent from that meeting. Um, as a reminder, uh, ICIP due is is due early this year, we used to have it due around the September timeframe, DFA has moved that timeframe up. So it's now due July twelfth, I know Steve has sent an email out to all elected officials and department heads. So if you haven't got back to Steve yet, if you could please get back with him so we can move that process and get that information to Commissioners for their consideration. Um, in regards to the town hall meetings, I just wanted to let everybody know, all those recordings, um, of the Zoom town hall meetings, they are all up on our website and they'll be up on the website until May seventeenth. So anyone who would like to go back and look at those again, they still are gonna be up there till May seventeenth. Um, we did receive again in the last three days, which was after our last commission meeting, but too late to put on this commission meeting. We did receive a couple requests, one of them was a letter of support, um, by Senator Martin Heinrich's office, uh, for supporting Rip Whip Road funding. Uh, they're wanting us to do a letter of support. And also, uh, Missy Courier, President of Namoga, had reached out asking if we would consider a resolution uh, regarding, um, water reuse in New Mexico. So I do plan on bringing, for your consideration, a resolution, uh, for reuse, uh, of water here in New Mexico at the next commission meeting. Um, and just to let you know, um, the letter of support, because most letters of support that I do as a county manager usually just consists of economic development. If they have anything to do, especially with Whip or, um, bigger projects like that, I tend to like to bring them to you to make sure that you all are on board, um, for that support if I send that as well too, so I wanted just to bring that to your attention. Um, just, uh, congratulations to, uh, Commander Leos for his award, that's, that's really good. And for Deputy Moreno for the award that he received as well too, so thank you for letting us know that. The last thing that has also come up, um, here recently, here in April, we received a letter from New Mexico Association of Counties, the Board of Directors. They did meet in January, um, and according to their bylaws, they needed to make sure that the authority remains financially solvent. Uh, so during that time in January, uh, the board passed a capital adequacy policy. They worked with a company, Price Waterhouse Coopers, who conducted the capital adequacy, um, assessments. And they essentially developed options for the New Mexico County Insurance Authority to adopt. And what they ended up adopting was what they call the lower board, um, meaning that they need to have fifty-four million dollars, um, in their net position to be solvent, um, in case, um, they have an extreme risk year for coverage. in case, um, they have an extreme risk year for coverage, and also for reinsurance. I know reinsurance has been an issue for a very, very long time. Um, we used to have a bigger insurance coverage for reinsurance, and that has gone down now. So, it's a little bit more attractive for reinsurers to look at New Mexico County Insurance Authority, um, when you have at least that cushion, um, to consider us for reinsurance. So, because they chose the lower option of fifty-four million dollars for net position, they're currently at thirty-seven point five, um, right now, which leaves essentially a deficit of sixteen point five-five million dollars over the next three years. So, what they did is they took into consideration everyone's law enforcement, multi-line and workman's comp insurance in two thousand and twenty-three, was ever in the pool. Um, and they did a portion of that sixteen point five-five million dollars to be split up over the next three years. Eddie County portion is going to be eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We would have the option to pay for that right up front and be done with it, or you can split it up in three different fiscal years, um, to be payable, um, each year, however we'd like to do it. Um, I am just bringing this as a comment because it is something that we are going to have to do, but I just, I wanted you guys to be aware of this, that this is something that we will have to pay out, you know, either right away or within the next three fiscal years. So, that is all of my comments.
Madam Manager, I, I, it came to me in a bit of any, the other names, Sergeant Duchesne and Sergeant Aranda, and former Deputy Matthews, who also she was, so.
Thank you.
I'll bring you up before I move there.
You're too known for that. I understand how it works.
I hit sixty this year, so I'm getting there.
With that, I'll turn it over to the commissioners.
All right. Commissioner Beard.
I don't have a lot to say, but, you know, to go back to all the discussions on the county. You know, Ernie and I have very few differences on this, but the one is kinda major. I definitely want that building restored, and I want it fixed. And as long as we can allow the public to walk in and at least have a portion of that building to themselves without the requisite security, I can get on board with keeping the courthouse there. I don't understand how that could possibly be done. I think courthouse stays, the court needs to go.
David, how do you do?
I've got a real quick list. Uh, I wanna thank publicly, I mean, what Josh just said, ConocoPhillips. Um, it's awesome to see our oil and gas industry to continue to support law enforcement, uh, fire services. Um, they're great partners to have here. I don't think they get enough thanks, um, in the state. And so, I wanna make sure that we do, 'cause it's awesome that they constantly partner with us. They're hopefully gonna partner with us on, on many other projects as well. Um, also wanna, and Roberta Conver already did it, but, uh, the HIDA award, I think that's awesome. Um, one of those things that I think this board has constantly said, we wanna do everything we possibly can to hammer on the drugs, hammer on all the legal activity out there. Uh, I'm very proud of everything that you've accomplished. Um, I'm proud of the three dogs. Do we have our third dog yet?
She's coming.
Great. I'm proud that we're gonna have three dogs, um, getting that stuff off the streets, 'cause, you know, unfortunately, when we're talking about the border, we've seen a lot of discussion on that. We've seen folks actually visiting the border, um, to discuss it. Um, and what's happening down there is, is a tragedy. And anybody that doesn't think it's a tragedy, I don't know where you're looking or what you're thinking. It's an absolute tragedy. And it's not just for Eddie County, it's for the entire United States, because that junk is getting up into the state, killing people, um, destroying families. Um, and I think it's disgusting, um, that it's happening, and, and it doesn't feel like, um, as many are doing what they should as, as are. Um, but I am proud of, of the efforts that, that you're making, your departments are making, and that your extension, extent, I guess it'd be extensions to you are making as well. So, please keep up the good work. Um, hopefully, the message will get out to Eddie County, not putting up with it. Uh, we will stop you, we will get you, and, uh, go somewhere else, stay, or just don't bring it, would be the best message, but we're not quite there yet. Um, a couple of quick clarifications, 'cause I've seen how things have worked lately, so I wanna make sure. Um, I've got clarification on a few things. Uh, when I was talking about the jail thirty-one years ago, I think the, the commission, I would never second-guess that decision. They probably did the best decision they could at the time. Um, and I, hopefully, that's what folks are gonna see with us. Uh, we're trying to take our time with the courthouse. We're trying to, we've taken our time with these others. And as we grow, we just wanna make sure that we're not having to do this again, um, if that's what we do in thirty years, twenty years, whatever that is, um, with the information we have. None of this has been just a, let's, this is fun, let's just do it. Um, there's been huge discussions. We've been discussing the jail since I've been here. Um, it has been an ongoing project since I've been here. Um, I'm excited to see that, that we're going to move forward with the jail especially. Um, that's something that's important. Um, I think the warden is probably, I don't know how you do it. You do such an exceptional job, you don't get enough credit for it. Um, and I just, I can't thank you enough, and, and I'm proud that you're gonna have a jail that you'll, you'll be, not that you're not proud of it, but proud of the facility. Um, and, and again, I'll, I'll never be able to thank you enough for what you do and what you put up with, and the, the foresight you put into it, the hard work you put into it, and everybody that works with you from extension. I, I just, I appreciate y'all a great, great deal, and you deserve it. We're glad to have it. Um, and I hope it's, sounds weird, but the best jail we can build. Um, I hate that we're building a jail, but, um, it's one of those things we have to have, um, so I'm proud of that. Um, and the other clarification, just because, like I said, I get things lately. Um, when I said I am not a big proponent of government-only buildings, I am not. The courthouse is one of those that we will always own, as far as I'm concerned. So, please don't take that as I would ever consider that. Um, I've seen that before. That is not one that I would ever be, uh, excited to see gone, as, as I am the commissioner. I would never vote for that. So, just those two quick clarifications, so anybody listening can understand my thoughts on both of those. The other thing, uh, we've heard a lot about miles to work and time and all those things. The other big thank you I would, would be to oil and gas, to Whip, to the potash mines, to farmers and ranchers, um, who every day drive hours to work, drive hundreds of miles to get their jobs done. Um, I think when, when we're talking about those things, and I'm not belittling any other miles, that's not what I'm saying, but I do wanna make sure that as we're moving, as we're talking about these things, um, the men and women in Eddie County are doing some amazing things, and I think you did a great job of, of kinda highlighting that. Um, and I'm just proud of them. I mean, it's amazing when I'm talking to folks in Artesia, uh, we're trying to set something up, and they say, well, I leave at four-thirty in the morning so I can get to my job, and I don't get home until probably six-thirty, seven-thirty at night, um, because of where they have to drive to go to work, the jobs they're doing, the things they're doing to further our county, to continue to help our county, to make our county great. Um, I think Police and Fire does the same things. Y'all put a ton of miles on every day, um, fighting for our county, continuing to make our county safe. Um, so, I don't wanna discount those miles either, that, uh, there's some amazing stuff being done in this county. Um, and people do it every day, and, uh, I'm sure proud of them for doing all of that. Thanks for bringing up early voting. Um, please go out and vote. Um, every vote counts. I don't care what anyone says, every single vote counts, and it only counts once. Every vote counts, but it counts one time. But it doesn't count if you don't vote. So, please go vote. Um, lots of important things happen. So, with that, I'll call.
Yeah, uh, we had a great participation, I thought, in our town hall meetings, and I wanna, uh, thank everybody that took a chance, an opportunity to, uh, get out and address government. I think that's important. Uh, we don't get things done without the community's support, and so, I think that that's good. I think going along with that, our new information person is going to be a great, uh, deal. I, I noticed from some of the, uh, comments that were made in the town hall meetings that maybe the public wasn't aware of all the things that this commission has done over a period of time, such as the support for the Sheriff's Department and fire services and those things. It was obvious that some of them didn't have an idea as to things that we've done and supported for those guys. Uh, and I think it's important, uh, that they do know those things. And, uh, so, going forward, maybe when we get this person on board and get everything up and going, uh, that, that that won't be the case. And, uh, so, government, I mean, community is always, uh, welcome in government, and I think that's part of the transparency of this commission, for sure. Uh, I don't think that we tried to ever do anything that wasn't transparent. And it, it has always been published in places that maybe the public didn't, didn't go look. And so, I think that that's important. I think that, that everybody in the county does a great job, and I think that, uh, the community needs to know about that. So, thank you.
To kinda work off what you said, Ernie, I think we're making, uh, moves in that direction. We're updating to the .gov website, you know, upgrading some of our internal practices, and that's only going to help with being more transparent with the public. Also, want to, uh, thank the public for coming, um, for providing their comments. I've said repeatedly, I respect passion, no matter what it is, agree, disagree, I will always listen to that. Um, and wanna thank the staff and everybody that made that happen, too. Um, really, that's all I have to say. Uh, Commissioner Henry, your comments about hard-working people in Eddie County, I mean, it's true. People work very hard here. They drive long ways, they're on call, they get home, they get called right back out. Um, so, you know, people work hard in our area, and, um, I'm just very grateful that we have the means to kind of take care of some of our own employees, like the, the warden and the staff. I do hope that people are excited about this coming, and, uh, hope that we can give them a more efficient and safe space to work in, so.
First, I'd like to congratulate Commander Leos and the others that received awards, but specifically Commander Leos, for the Lifetime Achievement Award. That's a big award that not many people are ever given, so that's something to be proud of. Um, it goes to show what we're doing here, what the HIDA, what our HIDA team, what our task force is doing here. Um, as everybody else has mentioned, early voting started today, so please get out and cast your vote. Complaints only go so far, and if you don't vote, your complaint's completely unwarranted. The courthouse, it's been such a topic of contention over the past three weeks, month, whatever it's been. We've all heard and listened to so many different perspectives, and, um, I, I appreciate everybody that's reached out, and I've heard everything. Hearing and agreeing with are two different things. Um, I think perspective is key in looking at situations. And it's very easy to get wrapped up in what is popular and what everybody is thinking and saying, and jump into the same group, or in this case, dare I say it, mob mentality. Um, and when you start to look at things and you're so enamored in it, you can't step back and see what issues are actually trying to be addressed. And I'm glad that we took a step back, and we're gonna look at this and really examine all options. Because voting one way or another today, I think, would have been the wrong decision. I know that that's going to be a decision that isn't going to satisfy many that have spoken out and will continue to receive those comments from people, and they're welcome, and we will hear them, and we will listen to them. But I just hope that everybody understands and appreciates that these are decisions that are not being taken lightly. These are things that, outside of all of our real jobs, we have taken a lot of time out of our lives to discuss this with multiple different people, um, get as much information as we can. These aren't decisions that, that are taken lightly, and I don't want anybody to feel that that's the case. Um, if somebody is somehow getting personal benefit off of this, that's pretty impressive, 'cause I don't know how that could be the case. Um, and then, going off of ConocoPhillips and what Commissioner Henry said, this just goes to add to my point, wh- what I mentioned earlier, of the heart and soul of Eddie County being the industries that are here. It's not the courthouse giving ten thousand dollars to fire services, twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars, right? It's industries. It's not just the oil and gas industry, it's all industries that are contributing to this. That is the heart and soul of this community. It's not a, it's the people. It's not a building, it's not a, uh, an object, it's the people. And I hope that we don't lose focus of that. So, with that, that's all I have to say. Everybody, have a good day.